Good evening. I would like to call the order of the Kaiser City Council in regular session. It is Tuesday, January 16th, 2018, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Ryan?
President.
Counselor Freeman?
President.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Parsons?
Here.
Counsel Herrera?
Here.
And Counsel Anderson.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We are going to start off with special orders of business tonight and make a very special introduction. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Deputy Chief Coons?
Okay, at this time, I would like to call up Officer Scott Kenniston and go ahead and stand over here, Scott, so the camera can zoom in on you. And the newest member of the Kaiser Police Department, K-9 Kobe. And I have some script to read here for you that's been prepared for me. So, police service dogs are a specially bred and very highly trained canine. Therefore, they are very expensive. The Kaiser Police Department purchases its dogs with funds from private donors. Following the untimely death due to illness to Police K-9 Bruno, we purchased Kobe for handler Scott Kenniston. A little bit about Kobe, the highlight of the show this evening. Kobe is a three-and-a-half-year-old German shepherd from Czechoslovakia. He is a tracking dog, not a drug-detection dog. We purchased him from Adler Horst Kennels in Riverside, California, and we received him on November the 9th of 2017. In addition to the training that Kobe received in Czechoslovakia, he and Officer Kenniston attended a month-long canine training academy in Albany, Oregon. Officer Kenniston was already an experienced canine handler, so most of the training was for him to appraise the dog, him of Kobe's skills, and for them to refine their communication and become better partners together. Scott and Kobe successfully graduated from that class, and Kobe is now certified through the Oregon Police Canine Association, and he began working the streets of Kaiser on December 12th, 2017. His very first deployment ended with him finding and apprehending a wanted felon who fled from officers on his very first shift. Along with presenting the police service dog Kobe tonight, we want to give special honor to two individuals that made Kobe joining our department possible. And those individuals are the late retired U.S. Marine Corps Master Gunny Sergeant Lou Nordike, who unfortunately passed away last week, and his late wife Nancy, who passed away a few years ago. Both of these individuals were longtime friends and supporters of the Kaiser Police Department, and by that I mean more than financially. These individuals were part of some of the very first community policing committees that we formed in the early 90s, and they were representatives from the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association, and they supported us all along the way. So Kobe wouldn't be here if it weren't for both of the Nordikes, so we thank them very much. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions you have and/or if you want to come greet the dog or whatever you want to do. This is the newest member of the Police Department.
Well, that is absolutely fabulous. Any questions? We can really come up and pat him?
Whoa.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, very, very.
I'm not really sure. Hi Kobe, we'll just say hi from here.
There you go.
You can meet Scott?
Yeah, we're good. Counsel Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I thought it was, it's rather interesting that he's keeping a close eye on the reporter in the room, just for the record here, sorry.
You must have spelled his name right.
Seriously, the question I had was, I know there were some donations of special protection for the dogs. Is that one of them? That, you know, the vest or whatever thing that he's wearing?
Yes.
Okay. I've been curious about what, you know, those look like and so forth.
It is a ballistic vest. Yes. Yeah, we received two of them. I can't remember all the specifics, and I'm sorry to say, I can't remember the individual's name from Kaiser that donated about a year ago to a partnership canine. Vest for canines, and both of our canines were outfitted. So obviously, either this vest has been fitted for Kobe, but we do use them. These dogs are placed into some very dangerous situations, and we want to protect them the best we can, and that's one of the latest tools that they have. And another one that we're researching right now is the ability to outfit them with cameras so we can receive in real time what they're seeing if they go ahead of us. So. And with that, if I can interrupt you, I looked out at the audience and I saw Scott's wife and his two children, and I wanted to recognize them just for being here because really taking on the responsibility of being a canine handler, it takes the whole family, and it takes commitment and dedication, and it's not a part-time job. It is 24/7/365. These dogs are not kennelled. Here at the Police Department, they go home and they become a part of the family. And Scott really has enjoyed his mission and assignment as a canine officer, and after he lost his last dog, he said, "I'm ready, ready to do it again," and he stepped up to the plate, and he's just one dedicated officer that we're very proud of, and we thank his family for sharing him with us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Other than your other questions, and we wish you all the best in your service, both you and your canine partner, and thank you to your family. That will take us now to committee reports, and we've got several that we get to hear from tonight. We've gotten the year off to a very busy start. So let's start off with Crystal Wilson and a report from the Planning Commission. Welcome, Crystal.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello. A really easy report. We received training from Shannon, and we reviewed the 2018 plan of topics we wish to look at this year.
Okay.
That's everything.
So you're new to the commission?
Yes.
So thank you for volunteering for the Planning Commission. It is a very challenging and detailed task, and we appreciate your willingness to serve on that committee.
Thank you. It's been very interesting. I've learned a lot. I've appreciated the time.
So during your training with Shannon, you were successfully able to stay awake?
Yes. It's actually really interesting, and he recorded it, so, you know, it was like, we got recorded.
All right. Well, we look forward to hearing from you through the year, and we look forward to your work on the commission. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We now have an update on the parks, and that would be from Mr. Matt Lawyer.
I am, for the record, Matt Lawyer. I'm actually, Madam Mayor, if it pleases the council, I'm going to switch hats real quick and do the watershed council update before I do parks. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, in Another Life, I also serve as the Chair of the Claggett Creek Watershed Council. We had our first meeting of 2018 last week, and I'm really excited to report that we brought on a new member of the council. Name is Miranda Coleman. She's an eighth grader from Whittaker Middle School. She came to me and asked me for some volunteer opportunities, and I says, "I can one-up you on that. We've got an opportunity to be on the watershed council, and are you interested?" And you can get all the volunteer hours you want, and she jumped on board immediately and is already doing some really good projects to build some posters for our next two cleanup events that are happening on February 3rd and 10th. So we're really excited to have her on board and really encouraged to have youth participate in the community, and this is just one way that they can get involved early. And normally, we get high schoolers, so it's really encouraging to have a middle schooler now. Upcoming events, we have, as I said, February 3rd is going to be this Phase 2 portion of the Kaiser Rotary Arboretum Project over Kaiser Rapids. We've got 46 additional trees that have to be planted to complete the project. That's going to happen, as I said, February 3rd. We're looking for approximately 100 volunteers. The project will begin probably about 9:00 a.m. It's either 8:00 or 9:00, I can't remember. I'll verify that, and last until it's done. The last time we did them, we did 33 trees, and they basically planted a tree in minutes. We were done in about 40 minutes.
Seriously?
Granted, we did about four hours of prep work beforehand, but it went really well. So that's going to happen. For those that are unaware, the Arboretum Project is designed to be, the trees of the City of Kaiser have identified as trees they want within the city, and so there's a huge variety of different trees that's going to go in there. And if folks want to know, you know, what's the difference between this tree and this tree, and what the canopy may look like, and how it might affect the appearance of their yard, that's the intended effect. Not all the trees are native, but they're not trees that we don't want in the state or in the local area. So that's a really exciting project. February 10th, we're doing our annual Ben Miller Cleanup, which is a really exciting event. We're hoping to engage Claggett Creek Middle School students because they generally walk by there on their way to and from school. A lot of it is trash cleanup and leaves removal. We do some invasive species removal of canary weed grass and the canary reed grass and blackberries and things like that down around the creek itself. That's going to be sort of water permitting. Hopefully, we won't have a lot of rainfall, but we'll play that by ear a little bit. Coming up in March, we have the annual Civic Center Cleanup. Again, that's a very successful event. I know Counsel Freeman's been out and getting blisters doing that, and so we'll be excited to see the rest of you out there helping out.
Hopefully, it won't pour this year?
What's that?
Hopefully, it won't pour this year?
Yeah. So, and again, that's another one where we're going to engage, you know, as many students, honor society leadership and stuff like that that we can. Counsel Reed?
I got you.
So, good events. So last year, we did not do an Earth Day event. Kind of planning and other things just kind of fell into it, and it didn't happen. But this year, we've decided to use April 22nd, which is Earth Day, as our grand opening of the Kaiser Rotary Arboretum. There's some preliminary planning going in right now for that, but it's going to be on that Sunday, hopefully a nice few-hour event. More details to come on that, so keep your ear to the ground on that. But it's going to be, it's going to be a really, really fun event to really celebrate the arboretum. I heard there might be some boat tours of Willamette and some other fun activities, bounce houses, et cetera, but we'll play that by ear as that comes along and more plans come in there. Other than that, looking forward to working with Mayor Clark and Mayor Bennett as it relates to the watershed and how both cities play a critical role in that. We're nearing completion, finally, of the boundary change for the Claggett Creek watershed. At one point, they actually said that we didn't exist, but they were looking at a watershed council that existed like 25 years ago that no longer exists, and now we're under this different coalition, but they didn't understand what that was. Anyways, long story short, all we were trying to do was get the spit of land, basically, that follows the river and completes a portion of the watershed that isn't adopted by anywhere else in the whole state. It seemed like a good thing to do. I don't think people in Polk County really want to come over to Kaiser Rapids and work at Kaiser Rapids for, doesn't make sense. But anyways, so that's nearing completion. We're really excited about that. We're also doing a story map project, which I really, really hope to have a lot more detail on, but basically, we're going to fly the entirety of the Claggett Creek at some point over the next couple of years, and in that process, geo-tag specific information about the creek, you know, where it's been above ground before and where now it's underground and things like that. So that's kind of a long-term project. Mark Akamoff with the City of Kaiser's really done a fantastic job of working on that and spearheading that project. The amount of work and where we're at on it right now is just absolutely amazing. So kudos to him and all the hard work he's put in there. So that's about it from the watershed perspective. If there's any questions, we'll answer those now on that.
All right. So any questions? Counsel Freeman?
Matt, did you give a date, and I just didn't hear you, for the city cleanup on March? You said March, and so I apologize if you set a date and I didn't.
Yes, I did. And it's March, I want to say it's the 14th, and it's like the second weekend of the month, I believe.
Second Saturday?
Yeah, I think so.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. Yeah, that's correct. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Anderson.
St. Patrick's Day.
Perfect. Thank you.
So March 17th, that will be the project here at the City Hall doing the grounds cleanup, trimming, and things like that.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions on watershed before we shift to parks? All right, and thank you for the hard work on that. And there's also going to be postings on, you have a Facebook page, do you not, for, so anything you want to know about events coming up, go to the Facebook page, like that, and you'll get notifications and opportunities to volunteer, and also to find out what we're doing to restore and enhance our environment right here in the City of Kaiser. So a lot of people like to think about the environment, and we have the chance right here to get our hands dirty and do something about it. So it's fabulous. Okay, switching hats now.
All right. So, as hopefully everybody in Kaiser is aware of by now, on July 17th, the City Council enacted the dedicated parks fee, and then turned around and told us we had more homework to do, which we like homework. And so one of the things we were tasked with was going back and creating the deliverables list for the parks and just exactly what it was we can expect from the fee over the course of the first year. We started off with basically taking a very big list of deferred maintenance items that staff had provided and marrying that together with the results of the citywide survey and just exactly what it was that people said they wanted from their park system. That came together in the list before you, where we have the Meadows, Claggett, Northview, Bob Newton, Chalmers Jones, Willamette Manor, and Country Glen. The projects were all assessed in asset condition, one being the best and five being the worst. As you can see, all of them are over three, so they're heading south, if not all the way south. They are all, with the exception of Claggett, I apologize for the typo there, they're all neighborhood parks. Claggett's more considered a community park, and then it gives the geographic location generally of where it is in Kaiser. The estimated costs are pretty good in terms of the value that staff has looked at. They're ballpark figures, but they're very close to what the actual costs are going to be. The one thing that you will not see on here, and I will address it, is the skate park. So if you have any questions specifically related to that, let's hold that for right this second if we can, and let's talk about these items. The Meadows Playground replacement is underway. They've already held one meeting with stakeholders in the area to discuss design and design potentials and, you know, the wants. There were some really, really interesting things that came out of the conversation. There are not enough trees, too many trees, you know, balconies. There were some really, really interesting things that came out of that, but there was a good showing of folks. Everybody seemed to be pretty encouraged to have something new and fresh and safe there. I know that staff has taken that information back, going to sort of reconceptualize it and then bring it back for at least one or two more work sessions with that group. That project is expected to be complete in, I don't think it's, is it this fiscal year?
I believe so. Well.
It may not be. I know it's going to be in calendar year 2018, but I don't know if it's going to lie specifically within this fiscal year. I think it is, but I may be misspoken, so I don't want to go on record with the specific timeframe. But I know it's supposed to be in calendar year 2018. They're also looking at, staff is also looking at other projects to be completed. This list represents projects basically over the next 24 to 36 months. So we've got a little over half a million dollars in projects between replacements, reconstructions, refurbishing repairs, and then it's $150,000 just in paths alone. And those are probably going to all happen in one fell swoop instead of kind of piecemealing it, because ultimately, it's a lot cheaper to do them all at once versus trying to come in, go out, come in, go out. So again, we're talking about a $550,000 list of projects over the next 24 to 36 months. That doesn't take into account the cost of FTEs, the equipment, and any other things that are going to happen as a result of this fee beginning. So those are costs that are not attributed in this initial table. Those have already been, they're done, and they're on their way. In addition, this does not take into account all of the additional maintenance pieces that are going to happen as a result of this fee. There's not really a good way to quantify exactly what that's going to cost, because we haven't seen it, we haven't done it. There's going to, you know, staff has assured the Parks Board that there is going to be an increase in mowing, there's going to be an increase in tree removal, there's going to be all of those things that people ask for. So I think it's helpful to expect that that's going to happen. The, there's a list of comments on these following pages, and these are really just a combination of a lot of different capital projects, a lot of wishlist things that I think people have said, "Yeah, we really want to see these kinds of things happen." I did my best to capture as many of these as I can, everything from lighting at different parks to, you know, new playgrounds to, you know, "Hey, I've got this problem at this park. Can we get it fixed?" And it's like, well, no, you got to address staff. I mean, there's, it's really hard sometimes to communicate via Facebook because they think it's a one-stop-shop, and I'm not the authority on that. So I did my best to try to respond and, you know, gear that back towards staff versus being the person to answer that. But on the back page here, this is really a consolidation of all of the comments and all of the thoughts that came out of the parks prioritization process. So maintenance was, again, like the top thing. Everybody said, "Take care of what you got." So they asked for some additional repairs of Willamette Manor Sports Courts. That's already being addressed. They had the pickleball and tennis ball courts. There's some material that failed. Robert's working on that. Warning signs for hazards in parks, such as steep banks or slippery areas on paths. Big issue with transient camps along the entire park system, mostly along the river. Better mowing, again, we know it, removal of trees, we know it. Capital projects, people asked for the dog park, an additional dog park drinking fountain, both for human and canine alike. At Country Glen, they wanted a splash pad, swings, benches, more trees. Purchased land between Claggett North Ridge, a fence at Ben Miller, more benches. And then security was also a thing that was really interesting that came up. System-wide security and removal of excess brush in other areas that can encourage threats, specifically lighting at Bear Park and other parks, and then also an increase in neighborhood watch groups, which I don't know how parks would play into that, but it was a really interesting sort of segue. So, all that being said, the Kaiser Parks Board took a look at all of this, and we are forwarding this as a solid recommendation over the next 20, 12 to 36 months, understanding this is probably going to be a living, working list. Staff is going to identify things that come up. If something of significant maintenance or safety or otherwise comes up, or if somebody comes and says, "I'd go for a million bucks at you guys, but you got to give us $100,000 to do a great capital project," that's going to be on the City Council to say, "Well, no, we really don't want that million dollars, but thanks for asking." I don't see that happening, but again, those are things that are going to come up, and we just have to recognize that this is going to be a little bit of a living document. Lastly, on the parks prioritization thing, before I go any further and forget, I just want to thank the members, specifically Chair Loudon, Kat Gainer, Jim Taylor, Barb McCullough-Jones, Seth Kerner, Clint Holland, Lisa Buick, Brad Ornsmeyer, Bob McCullane-Bush, and Brian Hanson, Wayne Frye, who's now on the Parks Board, and many, many others that came in and participated in this. It was a very well-thought-out group, a lot of really good discussion, and the mayor kept us tasked as usual. So I'm going to do the Phase 2 of the skate park, and I have one other piece not related to the parks prioritization.
I'm going to push pause for a second on this before we talk about the skate park, because that is a hot topic in and of itself. So Counsel, Counsel President Parsons has a question.
So, Mr. Lawyer, could you explain to the audience and to everyone watching what SDCs can be used for and what they can't in this list that you just gave us, please?
SDCs, great question. Counsel Parsons, thank you for putting me on the spot. So SDCs, as you called them, or as I'm going to identify, is system development charges.
Yeah.
I went to another language for a second. Are charges that occur when new residential development goes into the city. There's a pot of money that has accumulated dollars over time in an interest-bearing account, and those specific funds can only be used for new capital projects, meaning I can't, we can't, the city cannot by law versus, I think it's Nolan versus the City of Tigerd, take that money and allocate it towards repairs and maintenance of projects. And I don't, forgive me for citing a specific court case, but I believe that's the one. So unless it's borrowed and then paid back, but those are getting into nuances of finance that Tim understands way better than I do. But the basics is that you can't use it for anything new. We have to get, in order to do a $100,000 project, we'd have to come up with, I think it's 87% of the total value of that project in order to free up 13% of SDCs that would go towards that project. It's a very complicated thing, but essentially, to keep it simple, new projects require a ton of match, have to be part of the Kaiser Master Parks Plan.
Thank you.
Did I miss it?
No, it's good job.
That was very close. So, the Dolan case didn't have anything to do with SDCs, but that concept is correct from state law. And what it really boils down to is it has to be capacity-increasing kind of things that means more people can use it. Matt was right regarding the percentages for what's called new SDCs, and I don't remember what the date is, and I don't remember what the dollar amounts are, but we have a pot of what's called old SDC money. It's not real large.
Do we?
That is, that pot of money can be used at a higher percentage, but it's not a ton of money. But other than that, that is accurate, and that's one of the problems with the SDCs. The SDCs, system development charges, work a lot easier with things like pipes, sewer and water. And they say, "Okay, this is bigger, this provides more capacity." It's kind of hard to convert that into parks. But the concept is, is that new development pays for not maintenance or replacement, but actually something new to add capacity to the system.
And I think there is capacity in other areas for like land purchases and things like that, and you break into different percentages, but the crux of it, as Shannon said, is new basic stuff, so.
Counsel Parsons, sorry, Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Matt, Mr. Lawyer. So, you look scared. You should.
I am.
Because I'm mad at you. So, I'm looking at this list, and I know we've had lots of conversations, and I'm happy to take it offline for more details, but of course, with Mr. Lawyer not being here, I think he has some of the answers, too. So when I look at this list, it was my understanding that our number-one priority was to be ADA-friendly and make sure those repairs were first, and then also that included safety. So when I look at this list, and it looks like we were in a partnership with a paving company. It's like, so not that those things aren't safety or ADA, but I'm just wondering how that turned into a priority over lighting and the other things that we've talked about as a group collectively for the whole time. So do you see my point? Like, how do you get to, "Let's get a new sport court, too. We need lights for safety," or "to clear the path" kind of thing to, and this is seven out of 19 parks. That's 75% paving.
Right. And to answer your question, Counsel Ryan, I think that hazard direct impact on accessibility in most of the paths that we have, as far as I know, the accessibility study is not complete for the city, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I know that that was one of the things we were waiting on. But accessibility was a key metric in terms of making these decisions, and they are being considered in every single one of these parks, specifically on the Meadows. The path is a consideration, and the accessibility to that playground in terms of, you know, how people with physical impairments or howbeit can get into and onto the playground is all part of that. The sports, you know, to say that we're in the business of payment, I don't think is necessarily right. The sports courts, they're all in such terrible repair now that they are a significant issue of safety because of cracking and because of those other things. If you go out to Claggett right now and tried to play basketball, I guarantee that if we all went out there and played, somebody would break an ankle because it's just moss-covered. In terms of the lighting, again, I brought that up, and those are projects and things that are considered, they're considered capital projects because they're new, and in some areas of the parks, maybe not anticipated in the master plan. So those are things we have to look at as additions, too. So I don't know that I've answered your question to the best of my ability, but I know that as we're looking at these, it was looked at through the lens of accessibility, and anything that is done now, capital, or in terms of repairs and replacement, all has to be through that lens of ADA accessibility, because if we were to do something that doesn't have the ADA accessibility built into it... Because if we were to do something that doesn't have the ADA accessibility built into it, we wouldn't be compliant with the federal law.
Right.
So.
So, you, you haven't answered my questions. I think, I guess really the, my hope is that the conversation's open, to keep the list open and keep the conversation going so that if we find an out of our ADA study that we need to change parks or make sure that we're taking care of that list first. Because that's how, and I know we all remember this, it's how we got here. So, to make sure that we handle that as a priority would be important to me. So I guess just seeing that the list is open and that this is our priority right now, I'm sure it can all be explained, of course, but let's, um, keep the upper conversation and, and of course include Mr. Lawyer, who's not here tonight.
Well, and, and, and I apologize for not providing it, and that's my fault, but I would, I would refer you back to the original thirteen, eighteen to thirty-six month work plan, where in the immediate needs that was addressed and basically adopted straight out the gate, was a system wide tree maintenance, the removal invasive species, trail assessment, and the ADA transition plan. So that was something that this body said, yep, just do it. And so by that, we use that lens as we were considering. And as these projects on the back page are discussed, anything new, um, maintenance, safety, immediate concerns. And those will generally probably go ahead of anything probably on this list if it surfaces as a significant issue.
You know, I was teasing you about being mad at you, man. I could never be mad at you. I appreciate all your hard work and the whole, the whole board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, um, I would like to emphasize what was said about, uh, all of the ADA or Americans with disabilities act projects. Everything we do will be, um, to the current standards. Um, the widths, the accessibilities, the ramps, everything will be brought up to the appropriate standards. Uh, it's something we do with any project that we do here in the city. Uh, when we have to rebuild, redo, it's always brought up to code. So that, it was definitely built in, it was part of all the conversations. And, um, it was one of the givens, so to speak, as this list was put together. Uh, the other thing I want to emphasize is that this is a rolling list. As projects come off, more are going to come on. Because as we all know, this is not all the projects that need to be done in the parks. These are the first ones that are going to get done, but then others are going to roll on as we can move through all nineteen parks and do the projects that need done. And I want to thank, uh, the Parks Prioritization Group and the Parks Board for the hard work of starting to sort that out. What do we do first? It's like when you look at a huge project and go, where do I start? Thank you, this is where we start. And then we'll move through all of our parks, uh, very thoroughly to make sure that they are done right. They're done, uh, sustainably and will last us a good long time. So I just want to emphasize those particular points. They've been very, uh, key portions of the conversation we've had surrounding the, uh, need for the fee and the use of those dollars and accountability for those dollars. We can now demonstrate where those dollars are going to go and what they're going to do for us, so. Uh, any further questions on the parks report?
We have the.
So we have the.
Skate park piece.
The skate park, yes.
And one other fun nugget. Um, so Robert is just so great at his job, and we couldn't ask for a better guy to run our park system. Um, in, in the haste of trying to really work this, um, we sort of, I'm not going to say table, but we postponed the discussion on, um, the skate park because when we initially reported back to council on this whole piece back in fall, we let council know that the, the skate park's success was so far beyond what was initially anticipated is really as July seventeenth. Um, as of July seventeenth, what we knew was that we were facing a potential total redesign or rebuild. Um, the contractor came back and said, in fact, that we had a pretty good facility, um, for what was built, that some specific targeted maintenance and targeted redesign, not a holistic redesign, would essentially render that skate park fully useful and fully accessible moving forward. So what that means is originally we were looking at a total cost of approximately half a million to three quarters of a million dollars on that skate park. The money that was put in, uh, in the resurfacing in some areas and redesign and, and sort of general band-aiding, um, brought in the expertise and the, and the contractors basically said that in the two bowl area, which is close to Rickman, that area needs to be redone. The transitions are terrible, it's not safe. Um, in that, in that two bowl area, they could do a, what's called a transition. So they go from one bowl to another, which would make it a lot more accessible, a lot more fun for the kids and users of the, of the park. Um, so that would have to be done. Um, a total grinding and resurfacing of the entire park, some work on the coping or the metal that, uh, they, they can grind on, stuff like that. Um, and, and really it would be right at a good standard. Um, what that doesn't address right now is the total accessibility issue. Um, because the park has some ADA accessibility, it just depends on how and where you go into it. But that would be a lens that we'd have to look at it through. Um, but anyways, uh, again, the, the Parks Board and the Parks Prioritization Committee, we really, really didn't talk about it. And then Robert kind of took us the task on it at the last Parks Board meeting and said, look, don't let this go off your radar. It was a major issue for the council. And we said, yep, you're right. Um, so just to kind of bring you back into loop on it, the expectation is that we're going to start hopefully soon. Uh, I'd say within the next probably three to six months into starting the planning for that, uh, and, and starting the work group and starting all of the things. It's going to cost, um, Robert's estimating probably a quarter million dollars to do the work instead of the half million to, um, three quarter million dollar, uh, mark. But that quarter million is really kind of on the high end. That's going to make sure we have the ADA accessibility, redo the whole surface, changing the bowls, fixing the coping, and really bringing that facility up to, um, industry standard or beyond. Um, so it's a much better story, I think, than where we were before it was complete. So we had a, um, we had an expectation without the final results, but it was, at the end game, it's going to save the city a, a lot of money. Um, so it's, it's a good, um, indicator that the work that was done was helpful. We got the right people in there, they did the work, that know the, know the type of, uh, facility we're talking about. But again, we're going to start that process again somewhere in the next three to six months. Going to be kind of a work group thing, bring in the right stakeholders, bring in the kids, bring in the users, uh, and really take a wholesale look at it. And, um, I, I really can't give you a specific estimate on when ground might break on that. Um, I would say absolute best case scenario would probably be calendar year nineteen, realistically probably twenty, um, to make sure it's right, to make sure that we have the funding in place. So we're not trying to rob Peter to pay Paul and move other projects around there necessary. Um, this is a very necessary project, we want to make sure we do it right. We want to make sure that we're not having the same conversation in ten to fifteen years. And I don't think, I think as long as we're really giving the attention it deserves, we won't be having this conversation again. So, um, it's there, I wanted to bring it back up. We haven't forgotten, we haven't forgot about it, but we also weren't giving it the attention I think it necessarily deserved because I think we were, um, relying more on the update that we'd given you in the fall and trying to get this done. So, um, I apologize for that, uh, not giving you more updates on that particular piece. So I'll take questions on that if there are any.
Okay, any questions on the skate park project? Uh, thank you for the update, that is a very important part of our park system.
So our last thing, uh, we had a really productive meeting, it was awesome.
You guys are busy.
Uh, smoking in parks. So it was on the wise counsel to kick it back to the Parks Board, and I appreciate that. Cough. Again, um, on behalf of the Parks Board, um, the Parks Board came to a three to four, uh, excuse me, four to three vote in favor of recommending a sign that says, thank you for not smoking in our parks. Um, a member of the Parks Board, me, um, argued that, uh, we would like to see a public meeting at a Parks Board regarding smoking in parks and gathering information from our neighbors and just getting a real feel for what people actually think of it, not just one or two people. Um, so that'll probably last until midnight, which would be great. Um, and, and so, so be it. I think it's very important to hear from, from everybody and, um, it, it's enough of an issue. Um, I took an unofficial poll on my Facebook page and got a lot of really, really good responses, but they're all very responsible adults that commented on it. And, uh, I expect that anybody else in the city that's willing to have the conversation about it and be objective, um, it's a good thing. And so, uh, our hope is that at the next Parks Board, we're going to open up that conversation, take public testimony, and hopefully have a, um, final, final recommendation to the, uh, city council on that particular issue. Um, there was some discussion about doing an all out ban, again, that motion failed. Um, there was some discussion about offering up, um, disposal units or whatever you want to ashtrays or something, um, out near the public right of way, um, to encourage people to not smoke in the park, but then at the same time not trash the park with their habit. And that didn't go anywhere. And what we were left with was a sign that said, thank you for not smoking, and a public meeting. So, um, that's where we're at. We'll have more ideas and opinions and a better sort of, um, pulse of what the, our neighbors want from that particular issue, so.
So I do have one comment, and thank you, um, that, that's a tremendous amount of work. And it's a very difficult conversation, um, cities around us have all had those conversations. On the ashtrays, I, other, AKA smokers' poles, those tall things for disposal. There's a lot of responsible people who smoke, who would like to appropriately dispose of their, their cigarettes, uh, before entering a park and so forth. And I would strongly encourage that appropriate placement of those poles to allow people to do the right thing. So people set us up for success would be, uh, a really good add to the recommendation. Um, that's just my opinion, I haven't talked to the city council, um, if we can have a discussion about that. But, uh, I think one of the things that our city does well is to look at proactive things that we can do to get to a goal. If a goal is to have appropriate, um, disposal and keep our parks clean, um, cigarette butts are a significant pollutant that gets into our stormwater. Uh, I believe we've taught, heard, uh, reports on that in the past from Elizabeth Sag Miller, from our Stormwater Division, about how, when those get in there, that's actually, um, one of those measurable pollutants that needs to be taken care of. Other municipalities have found that to be very successful and easy to manage, step toward, uh, grounds and waterways cleanliness, not to mention, um, other benefits from that. So, um, if you would take that at least from me, uh, do I have concurrence of council on asking them to have that conversation? Council Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, with that conversation or when you have the town hall or the meeting with, uh, would you let us know so that we, of course, can try to be present or invite people? But I guess I would, my, my question is, if we come up with a sign that says, thank you for not smoking in our parks, are we contradicting ourselves by putting something there so they can? I don't know, I'm just, I, I, asking the question.
Oh, but, uh, in my opinion, having a smoker pole to appropriately dispose of smoking materials is a way of allowing responsible people to do the right thing. And it also keeps the grounds clean. If, if you're saying they're not going to smoke on the way over or they're not going to.
I don't argue the point of having it, I just argue the point of having a sign, spending money on a sign that says, thank you for not smoking in our parks, but go ahead and do it. Here's, here's our, you know what I'm saying?
Well, the idea, Council Ryan, Madam Mayor, if I may, um, was to put it.
At the beginning.
I mean, right at the periphery of the park, so right, you know.
But not throughout the park.
No.
No, no.
Specifically in the right of way to.
My misunderstanding, it didn't make sense to me.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's not like, hey, we'll put one right next to the big toy and right next to the swing.
It's like, kids, don't do this.
It was more right in the right of ways, so as folks were entering in, um, to, to encourage the, the, um.
Perfect, yeah, that's a part, good partnership.
So, it sounds like we have concurrence that, um, if the Parks Board would entertain that as part of the recommendation and part of the overall strategy, that would be appreciated. Okay?
Well, thank you, council and everybody behind me for listening to pontificate for the last, heaven knows how long. Um, it's been a pleasure, and I'm really proud of the work we've done on the park stuff. And, uh, look forward to not coming back for a while.
And lots of pictures of projects. All right, thank you so much, we really appreciate the work. Now we're going to move into, um, public testimony. This time it's provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda for schedule for public hearing. We have no public hearing scheduled for this evening. And, um, I would like to take this opportunity first off to invite, uh, Mr. Massey, who has brought some local boy scouts to come and be present at our council meeting tonight, to come down and introduce yourself and your troop, if you'll come down to the table. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor Clark, thank you, President Parsons. Uh, on behalf of Kaiser Troop 121, I'd like to, uh, thank the, uh, city council for letting us come in and observe your meeting tonight. Uh, these scouts behind me, uh, we are here tonight working on our citizenship in the community merit badge. Uh, as part of the merit badge, our task is to attend a local city or civic meeting so that we can become more aware of what makes our community run and how it runs. So, we are here there. Um, I'm going to give the scouts a chance to stand up and introduce themselves individually if the council will, uh, allow it.
That would be great. And if they come, kind of come by the microphone, because then the people at home who are watching, uh, via video will be able to hear them. Would that be all right?
Get out of the seat and let them.
Yeah, come around, then if they could stand near the microphone and introduce themselves.
Just walk in the circle.
Yeah. Thank you, I really appreciate it, come on down. Yep. Kind of. Yep, just say, say your name.
I'm Hayden Wampler.
My name is Mitchell Bernards.
Tyler Guptill.
My name is Palmer Snapp.
Nelson Torres.
Gavin Isley.
Adam Rig.
And that's our troop.
And, and the other leader?
Hey, get over here.
My name is Mark Rig, one of the assistant scout leaders.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we would encourage any of, uh, young men, if they have questions after the meeting, and they get them to you, they're welcome to email us, um, to, uh, ask those questions. And we'll try to get as much information back as we can. And I would also have to encourage all of them, when they enter high school, to look into becoming a youth counselor or a youth liaison to any of our committees. We are trying to get as many young people involved in a very meaningful way in the governance of our city because you are the young people who are going to become the adults who are the next generation of leaders, who do what we do as volunteers for our community. So, um, all the information is on our website, and, uh, we'd love to have any of you apply to be a part of that, uh, in your future.
All right, thank you, Mayor Clark.
All right, uh, Council Herrera.
I'd like to add something to, uh, what, uh, Madam Mayor just said. If any of you guys, you, you can pick up one of our cards. And if anybody has any questions for a report or any kind of, a lot of us enjoy doing that, so feel free. That's what we're here for, any questions, and no question is a crazy question. Believe me, I get them every day. I love it. So feel free to do that, we'll give you a card and call us if you need to help on a report or something about the city, whether it's water or people or who does what, we will be happy to help you. And thanks for the work. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Council Herrera.
All right, thank you so much.
You are very, very, very good, excuse me, all right.
Thank you.
Should invite them on March seventeenth.
March what?
We should invite them for March seventeenth.
March seventeenth, I hope you're taking notes about the, uh, the city hall cleanup day. Love to have you, uh, join us. Um, we have two people signed up for public testimony, Mr. Dan Hepler. Come on down, and you're here to talk about the park and police fee. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Um, the, uh, park fee and the police fee, um, I don't see how they relate to the utility billing. Um, I feel that this creates a hardship on people on fixed income. And I could see where, uh, like the parks, where some of them, uh, like skate park, dog park, have a user fee, either a daily fee or a yearly fee to help supplement. And then the, the police issue, um, if it was presented, the needs, I'm sure the residents would vote for, for a increased budget. And I did talk to Deputy Chief about, on the website, the last statistics were for two thousand twelve. Thank you very much.
All right, um, hang on, we'll see if they have any questions for you. Um, and then, no, I appreciate you coming and sharing your thoughts tonight. And this was, been a process and continues to be a public process with the police and parks fees. Um, and then, uh, thank you for reminding us to continue to remind people if there are issues regarding the, um, you know, on fixed income, that we do have a system in place where people can apply for assistance, um, both on age and also on income. So we are here to make sure that, um, we can help the people who need that. And on top of that, um, the other part, oh, we've, the way we tiered it was that if people can only pay certain amounts. can only pay a certain amount, it's the utility portions that get paid first on the Kaiser Services fee. And then, um, the last ones that the money's applied for are the police and parks fees. So we would try to be very cognizant of the difficulties that some families in our community face. We're very aware of those, and we try to work very hard, both with our frontline staff and our, uh, management staff, to make sure that we take care of that. City manager.
Just, just really quickly, uh, I agree, and we all agreed, um, in relation to a direct applicability of these fees to a utility billing. Um, you know, they, they don't, they don't relate necessarily. The real impetus was, we wanted to keep the fees as low as possible and keep the administrative cost of collecting it as low as possible. And so using that format, that delivery tool, was the cheapest, most effective way for us to actually collect the fee. However, as Mayor Clark, uh, mentioned, we did, we are prioritizing your payments now, and so your water will never be shut off if you don't pay your parks fee or your police fee in full. So, um, that's, that's how we've prioritized the bills. You'll, you'll be, be sent a collection, but we won't shut your utilities off for that.
Okay, you, you mentioned that, um, there was, um, a reduction in fee for seniors, is that, um...
Seventy-five and older. Seventy-five and older, and then for those, uh, that meet the federal low to moderate income, uh, can apply for a, uh, reduction as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much.
And we have, uh, Mr. Anthony Behrens, who's going to talk to us about the Marion County Circuit Court. Come on down, and if you would, uh, just state your name and your city of residence for the record.
Sure, uh, my name is Anthony Behrens, and I'll spell that for you as well. B-E-H-R-E-N-S, like the paint, but with an E-N-S. Uh, my residence is 1995, oh, it...
Just the city.
Who's watching?
Yeah, just the city.
Just the city, oh.
Just the city of residents, yeah.
I don't know who's going to show up in my house. Uh, I live in Salem, Oregon, and, uh, I appreciate your time here, and I actually appreciate what you all are doing, because it has been a long day for me, so I can only imagine how long it's been for you all. Uh, I realize I only have five minutes, so I'll try to keep this brief. Um, I've been trying to talk to local leaders about the Marion County Circuit Court. There is a, an election going on now, and I, um, happen to be running, uh, for a position. So my, uh, hope is to get, um, to talk to all of you, obviously not tonight, but I'm going to reach out and hopefully, um, discuss, uh, with you, uh, if you have any issues that are going on with the court, um, if you have any questions for me about my candidacy. If I may, I just would tell you a little bit about myself. Um, like I said, I live in Salem, South Salem, uh, with my wife and son. We have three cats. Um, I was, uh, born in Marion County and raised here. I went to, uh, I even went to college and law school here. I didn't, I didn't move very far. Um, I'm, I'm a public servant like, uh, like you all. Um, my twenty-plus years of, of my legal career has been, uh, as a public servant. I've spent seven years as a judge, uh, with the state of Oregon, two years on the Marion County Circuit Court. Um, and if you, any of you, and I'm sure none of you have gotten a traffic ticket, um, but the traffic diversion program the court use, uh, uses now, that's me, so you can thank me later. Um, I have significant experience as a criminal prosecutor, um, and as a special prosecutor, I would travel around, uh, to different counties and try complex, um, securities fraud racketeering cases. I also work for the, currently work for the, uh, state's largest consumer protection agency, um, and we have a lot of constituents in, in this regard. The time when I was in the consumer protection capacity, I, um, I worked on fraud cases. A, a great many of them impacted elderly, um, residents of the state. And so, uh, I guess, throughout my career, I've, I've worked with vulnerable populations like the elderly, um, children who've, who've been abused, um, victims of violent crimes, those kinds of things. I've also, uh, spent some time in, um, uh, working in private practice, um, as, uh, as an attorney representing individuals, small businesses, and even some very large multimillion-dollar, uh, Oregon-based corporations. And most recently, um, I was involved in the negotiation of a contract with a, uh, large, uh, $500 million corporation, um, and the results of that negotiation will benefit, um, literally over a hundred thousand Oregonians who purchased their own health insurance. And, uh, kind of related led a project, um, where we obtained $150 million over five years from the federal government, which will, uh, also benefit, well, in this case, hundreds of thousands of Oregonians who buy their own health insurance. So, um, I appreciate your indulgence. Um, I, I, like I said, I've been speaking with people, and this was, uh, recommended for me to do, to come talk to you all, and I've actually, uh, planned out where I'll be going to every city in the county, so, um, it's kind of hard to do, because some of your, your meetings are conflicting, but, um, but I'll, I'm making it work, so. Uh, I don't know if you have any questions, but that's really all I wanted to say.
All right, uh, Council Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, I missed what you were running for.
Oh, Marion County, uh, Circuit Court Judge, uh, Position Five.
Position Five, thank you so much.
Just remember the bear. Vote for the bear.
Are there any other questions? Uh, we appreciate you coming and, and sharing your thoughts with us and letting people know who you are. Part of our political process is that we're all neighbors serving neighbors, so, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it, thanks so much.
All right, thank you.
I might have to duck out a little early.
Okay. That was everybody I had signed up for public testimony, except for, uh, Mr. Ryan Walsh, who's going to talk about the, uh, baseball field and price increase. So, um, since that's going, I believe the next thing on our agenda, I'm going to go ahead and call you down now under public testimony, and then we'll go into item 8A. So, Mr. Walsh, pardon?
Can you do this?
Oh, we didn't, I didn't do the appointment to the Kaiser Audit Committee. I'm going to call you first, though, and then we'll get that taken care of. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Just got to watch.
We just wanted to make sure we represented McNary Youth Baseball once again, and, uh, thank you for the time last time we had, and, uh, make sure that, uh, the financials we submitted to Mr. Johnson were, um, spread out, make sure everybody got our financials on that. Our one request was that, uh, we make sure that we do see Kaiser Little League's financials for last year, so we can explain to, um, our end users, um, kind of where the money's allocated to and where it's going. And that's just kind of why, why we're here, make sure that, uh, we got all the questions answered last time from us. Uh, we are working side by side with Kaiser Little League to, um, do our best to make sure we, uh, represent city of Kaiser and take care of the field as best we can for the kids. So, uh, we just wanted to, obviously, thank you guys, and if there's any further questions, make sure we followed up from last time on it.
Hey, Ryan, I just got a question for you.
Sure.
It's, it's actually not a specific question here, but I was hoping there's a time, sometime in the next couple of weeks, you and I could just sit down and chat about some ideas that I have?
Love to. Absolutely love to.
Give me a call, let's do that.
Perfect, and I know that, uh, Council Ryan also, um, spoke to me about possibly coming together with, uh, Kaiser Little League and McNary Youth Baseball and having a joint board meeting and kind of discussing some, um, fundraisers to the community, so we're looking forward to working with, I guess, but yes, I will definitely reach out to you if you call in.
Thank you.
We'll set up a meeting.
All right, now, um, and, uh, just so everybody knows who's watching, the financials that you provided and the information we got from Kaiser Little League were all included in our packet, so it's available to everybody online if they go to Kaiser.org and go to our agendas. You can click on that, and everybody can, uh, access the same material. So thank you for getting it to us, so we could get it out there for the public. And does anybody have any questions for Mr. Walsh? And, um, I hope you all, everybody has a great season, um, out there on the ballfields.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And before we go into 8A, I've been reminded, uh, that we need to go ahead and make an appointment to the Kaiser Audit Committee, so I'm back up to item 5A. Uh, city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Audit Committee was established by Resolution R-93-627.
Oh, thank you.
The committee consists of five voting members, three members of the city council, and two citizen members of the Budget Committee. Members to be appointed by the mayor and announced at a regularly scheduled council meeting, just like this one. In January 2017, Mayor Clark appointed council members Parson, Freeman, and Anderson as the council representatives, and citizen Budget Committee members Rob Burson, or Ron Burson, excuse me, and Joseph Gillis to the Audit Committee. The Budget Committee term of Joe Gillis expired in August 2017, and therefore we have a vacancy currently existing on the Audit Committee. Jonathan Thompson, a current member of the Budget Committee, has expressed his interest in filling this vacancy. It is recommended the mayor announce the appointment of Jonathan Thompson to fill the vacancy on the Audit Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Okay, seeing none, I think this is, what I get to do is I get to announce the appointment of Jonathan Thompson, then to fill, fill the vacancy on the Audit Committee. Tracy Davis got ahold of him, and he has accepted, so, um, with that, then, uh, he, that appointment is now official. All right, thank you very much. Now we'll go on to item 8A, which is the resolution approval of, uh, field usage rates for the 2018 season at Kaiser Little League City Park. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. You may remember at the December 18 meeting, this matter came up, uh, with regard to the annual approval of the field slot rates, or field usage rates, they're called. Uh, Kaiser Little League had requested an across-the-board $10 per game slash practice increase. Um, the council had some questions and asked both Kaiser Little League and McNary Youth Baseball to present some information to them and, um, postpone the matter, uh, to this meeting. Since then, Kaiser Little League has withdrawn their request for the field increase, and so there, uh, there would be no increase this year. The council still does approve, even if there's no increase, we bring it to you every year. And so there's a resolution attached for your approval, uh, tonight. Um, the other issues with regard to, um, financial aspects or programs or things like that is not necessarily on the, the, for, up for question tonight, but of course, we happy to try to answer any questions you might have in there, but the, the regular routine matters, the adoption of the resolution for the field slot rates. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any, uh, questions? Council Anderson.
Thank you. Just to be clear, the, uh, Shannon, is there, uh, rates are remaining the same?
Correct.
Okay, so no increase at all?
No increase at all.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the staff report? Council Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just wondering, from, um, did they submit their finances in the questions that we'd asked them? I didn't see the volunteer hours in that. Am I missing that, or did that not get submitted?
I think that they submitted as much information as they could quickly and easily put together.
Okay, so I guess I would ask, do we still want to see the, the, the numbers for the revenue versus the expenses, that, even though they're not asking for an increase, is that still relevant to everyone?
Well, and, uh, it, it is to me, but in preparation for the, um, 18, 19 year, um, I'm hoping for more detailed conversations about, um, not only the financials, but what does it really cost to, uh, main, run and maintain those fields? Making sure we have a good accounting of the volunteer hours that go into that, the, uh, because that has, has a value. Um, I know that people have spent hours and hours out there. That is, that's got a value to us. The, uh, in-kind donations, uh, the, yeah, I'll buy that can of paint, oh, you don't have to pay me back. We need to know what, what actually gets invested. I know people are like, oh, it's okay, you don't have to pay me back, you don't really need to write that down. That's very generous, and it's much appreciated, but yes, we do. We really do need to have that information, so we have a true sense of what this field costs to maintain, because at some point, somebody's going to have to buy that can of paint.
Well, and I would add with that, not only the value, of course, the high dollar value of the volunteerism, but, but the in-trade. There's a lot of in-trade, a lot of in-kind, a lot of, a lot of man-hours into it, man, man, woman hours, of course. But at the same time, you know, when we're looking at, when we looked at those numbers, you know, I did, I did follow up and look at some of the expenses around, for example, the cost of the Salem fields, the cost of the, the toilet and fields, things like, what's, what's the, what's the going rate for these things? And I don't think we're where we should be, and I'm, I understand we're not going to get there now, but I think the conversation's going to continue, and I'd love to know the real numbers. I think it's important to see, um, not necessarily for accountable, accountability, but I just think we're not giving enough credit where credit's due to say, okay, how, what does it really take to operate this, um, on a business level? And so, that's my opinion, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, and, and I would agree, um, having a really good business sense of, you know, what it costs to run these programs, I think helps, um, us to better understand, since this is a city asset, but it also benefits, uh, people throughout our community, and I, I'm hoping that'll be helpful also for both organizations to have those numbers, to have that data for decision-making. There was a question down here. Uh, Council Anderson.
Well, just a statement, Madam Mayor, um, two points, actually. Number one, I want to just thank, uh, McNary Youth Baseball for, these, this is detailed financial information, and that's the type of thing I think is good to have, um, as we deliberate, uh, whatever matter. And that's kind of what I was getting to at our last meeting. But secondly, the point about just calculating in the number of volunteer hours, that's spot on. That's such a good point, because I think it's helpful for the entire community to know just, just exactly how much goes into maintaining and running this particular complex. It's pretty, uh, pretty extensive, I have to believe. Um, and I'll just tell you, uh, I'll work, work in rotary here for a sec. Our Rotary International President, uh, Ian Reisley from Australia, has asked if we start, um, accounting for just the sheer number of people and hours that, uh, go into volunteering, uh, their time and everything, because if you look at it, it really adds up. And so, uh, I think that's also helpful as we go forward as a community, uh, with respect to a key park and rec ac, asset like this, too, because we don't have the staff to be able to take care of this. How's it getting done? It's getting done by volunteers, and, uh, I think that's just good historical info to have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anything else? Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council approve Resolution R-2018, Approval of the Field Usage Rates for the 2018 Season at Kaiser Little League City Park.
Second. It's a moved and seconded, that, man, let me try that one again.
Yeah, try it one more time.
Well, it's more with feeling. It's been moved on seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R-2018, Approval of Field Usage Rates for the 2018 Season at Kaiser Little League City Park. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Play ball. All right.
Nicely.
Yes.
Nicely.
With each other.
All right, uh, that takes us to item 8B, yes?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Just to, I, just one other thought that just popped into my head, and that is, I just appreciate the fact that there was kind of some mutual agreement to move forward on this, maybe delay a potential issue for down the road until, you know, cooler heads could prevail or something. Anyway, thanks.
And thorough discussion.
Yes.
So I appreciate that. Um, item 8B is a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a ground lease. Here you go, folks, something you've been waiting for, with Kaiser Cinema 9 LLC doing business as Kaiser Cinema 9, Kaiser Station Area B, and then a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into tenant representative, representation fee agreement with Paint Retail Properties LLC, Kaiser Station Area B, ground lease. Movie theater, folks. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Eric, pay attention. And this is going to be cool, by the way.
This is very cool.
Shannon?
It's really cool.
Boom, boom.
Write it, write it down. Okay. Shannon?
Uh...
There's much excitement.
Wow, what a lead-in.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. As folks have been following this, it's been long and drawn out, we have reached agreement on all the terms, subject to council approval, of the lease to the movie theater, folks. It'd be a nine-screen theater in Area B, the intersection Kaiser Station Boulevard and Lockhaven. I'll go over the terms real briefly for the audience, you're very familiar with them. The lease rate, quite a while back in the letter of intent, was set at 6% annually, the appraised value, the square footage that was needed went up, and so the rent went up, which was good. There, essentially, the rent is being based on 117,000 square feet, which is $147,120 per year, $12,260 per month. There's not going to be a second smaller building on the property by Kaiser Station Boulevard as initially intended. The building, theater, is going to take up all the square footage. It's a 50-year term with 49-year option for a total of potentially a 99-year lease. We have an escalator clause of 2% each year with a look-back every 10 years with a CPI. The rent commencement date, which was a little bit problematic in the last few weeks, the rent will be paid 90 days after the theater opens, or March 1, 2019, whichever is first. The city has obligations to install the curb-cut entries, the driveways from the street through the sidewalk, and to realign the sidewalks. The city won't be responsible for anything past the inside of the sidewalks, essentially. We'll also have to build the sound wall on the north side and construct the open space. Those obligations, essentially, with some minor details, were, at least the sound wall and the access points, or what I call the approaches, were mostly obligated anyway, because the agreement with the parcel on McLeod and Lockhaven are what we call the doctors' group, who have not built yet. We are working out some details with the doctors now. Originally, they were going to be responsible for those access points, and we would pay them half, because they're not ready to build. We're proposing to build that first, which is, of course, not hap, they're not real happy about that, because they don't have a building, so they have to pay out money. So we've tentatively agreed, subject to council approval, which I'll bring back to you, that they can pay that back over two years, which makes, takes the sting out of that a little bit, because essentially, we're saying, you know, you were supposed to build this when you opened, and now we're saying, "How about you pay us half, and now, even though you don't have a building to take the driveways to?" And then, as the mayor mentioned, there's a separate resolution for the broker commission. This was part of the letter of intent, and that is 3% of the first 20 years of rent payments. The commission's paid half upon lease signing and half upon the first rent payment. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018, authorizing the city manager to sign ground lease with Kaiser Cinema 9 LLC, DBA Kaiser Cinema 9, Kaiser Station Area B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018, authorizing city manager to sign ground lease with Kaiser Cinema 9 LLC, DBA Kaiser Cinema 9, Kaiser Station Area B. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the-
Build it. Now it needs to just get built.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018, authorizing the city manager to enter into tenant representative fee agreement with Pate Retail Properties LLC, which is at Kaiser Station Area B, ground lease.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018, authorizing city manager enter into tenant representation fee agreement with Pate Retail Properties LLC, Kaiser Station Area B, ground lease. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Woo! We've got a hotel, we've got a theater. Things are coming together. Long time coming. Let's move on, then, to the consent calendar. Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are three items on the consent calendar tonight. A is a resolution authorizing the city manager and chief of police to sign a memorandum of understanding, number eight, relating to the 2015-2018 collective bargaining agreement. B is a resolution authorizing Wanda Blaylock to sign Mark Nelson Oil Products, Inc., purchase order for card lock fuel cards. And C is the approval of the January 2, 2018, city council regular session minutes.
Are there any pulls? Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us, then, to our council liaison reports. Counsel Ryan, shall we start with you tonight?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am short and sweet. Today, we met as the Art Commission this evening, and we're working very diligently on our story polls for the history of Kaiser here outside of our, at our front of the building, and we are excited to say that we did achieve a grant for $5,000, and, which is a great win for us, and it's the start of the whole expense that we will need to raise the money. So I will report back on how we will do that, but we're a work in progress, and it's moving along nicely. And then, also, we were excited to talk about and fill more of our art gallery space. We've got more artists coming in, and so if you haven't seen the quilts that are up now, they're beautiful and handmade, so I highly recommend that. Also, I have, aside from meetings, there's also, we have a lot to attend this month. It seems like that was, this is the month of celebration here with the new year, but we've got our First Citizens Banquet this Saturday. I'm looking forward to attending with most of you, I believe. And then, our COG Banquet at the end of the month, Council of Governments. I think, Madam Mayor, you and I are attending the Agricultural Banquet for the county. And then, also, excited to share with our Volcano Sports Banquet as well. Everything kind of fell once, didn't it? So I'm looking forward to seeing you all. Thank you.
Yeah, I was looking at my calendar going, "I think this is busier than the holidays", just saying.
Looked like it.
Yeah, feels like it. Counselor Freeman.
Mine is short as well. I just want to thank, again, Counselor President Parsons and Counsel Reed for covering for me on my committees last week, as I was in Washington, DC for work, so I appreciated that. And then, January 7, early in the morning, we took down all the Christmas decorations, so thank you to Dave Wallery and the crew that did that, met at 6:00 AM, and I think we were done, again, in record time. Again, we'll be attending the First Citizens Banquet, and I will not be here February 5 at the council meeting. I'll be out of town as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Counsel Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I got to attend a couple of neighborhood associations since we met last, both the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association, as well as the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association. Again, just a big thank you to all those who come out to those. We are excited to have the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association meetings at a new date and time, and that being the first Thursday of the month here at the Civic Center, and so we're hoping to get a little bit more attendance from that, and we do appreciate the people that are coming there, and all the people who contribute to the success of the neighborhood, and that as well goes with the, for the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association. We had a really interesting presentation from the Kaiser Points of Interest Committee for the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association, and I would encourage you to look on the Kaiser, City of Kaiser website to see what they're doing, and what kinds of things we have to be proud of in that particular area. So that was fun to see. Cleaned up the Christmas decorations at the Heritage Center, cleaning up decorations all over the place, I guess, what goes up must come down, so, yes. Also had a heritage board meeting, and some interesting developments going on with the Heritage Center, and we were really excited about that. Stormwater Advisory Committee met, and we are wading through all the minutia of the stormwater permit that's coming through, and really appreciate Elizabeth's, all her work with that, Elizabeth Sagmiller, and the committee in general. There's a lot to understand, there's a lot to be explained, and I'm learning slowly but surely how that process goes, and just a thank you to all those who are putting so much into that. McNary has an interesting thing going on this weekend. They are doing their one-act festival, which means that these one-act plays are written and directed and produced, basically, all by students, and so that begins Thursday and goes through Saturday. So if you're interested in that, that should be a lot of really good work, and so I'm excited to see those students shine, and that will be exciting. There is a Heritage Center Museum Open House on the 26th at 6:00. So January 26 at 6:00, the Heritage Center Museum Open House, and there, it's a fantastic little museum, and again, a lot to be proud of in our community, and so we'd invite you to attend that if you can. And then, also, just a second to what Matt said earlier about the tree planting at Kaiser Rapids, which is happening February 3, beginning at 9:00. And the more hands we have, the faster we'll get done, and it's a lot of fun. Tree planting is fun. That's all I have for tonight, thanks.
That was at 9:00 AM?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mine might have been a little bit busier, because I was helping out Counselor Freeman, but on Thursday, I attended the Traffic Safety, Bike Ways, and Ped Committee. Mike Jaffe came in, and he is with, what is he with, I'm sorry?
He's the Transportation Director for the Midvallet Valley Council of Governments.
That's why I was going to thank you. All right, and he came in and talked about, you know, past projects that they funded with the Roundabout, that everybody just loves, and Schmalwen, the sidewalks, and they're looking to see what can be done right now with Wheatland Road, where parts have sidewalks and some don't, and then, of course, on Verta, they're going to look into that. We also actually talked about Newburgh, believe it or not, because he did not realize that Newburgh did not have lights, streetlights, and that at 7:15 in the morning during this time of year, it's pitch black, and students walk to school in the dark. So he just had things going off in his head, so I'm not sure what he's going to do about that, but he said he was going to look into something about Newburgh, so I thought that was kind of nice that he listened to that. They elected a chair and a vice chair. They also talked about House Bill 2017, which is the Safe Route to School Grant money. There's like $37.5 million available, and so they want to get their hands on some of that money, so we can work on that. This committee is just so busy, this could go on forever, but they also talked about funding allocations for 2021 to 2024, planning now for matching grants to see how much money, you know, we could get for the city to use as place markers for projects like connectivity, neighborhood connectivity, sidewalks to and from bus stops, safety, all that kind of stuff. So it was a very, very good meeting. So the top priority, however, for this committee, when they talked about safety, was sidewalks around Cummings, and I know they've been talking about that for a really long time, and that's still on the top of their list. But evidently, it's on the bond for the school district, so I don't know what that means. I just, they just talked about that, so. They also have 106 helmets left in various sizes. Then they have about $700 left in which to buy tomorrow, but they're always taking donations, because they'll be giving away those really fast, because with spring coming and summer. So also, they have a new youth council liaison, Isaac Matthews from McNary, and he, very, very nice young man, and he participated also in the meetings. That was really good. On Saturday, I attended the Representative Schrader, Senator Merkley forum that was held at Claggett Creek Middle School. It was a full house, by the way. The congressman and senator, though, had an intimate session with elected officials for like 30 minutes before, where we all got to express concerns about our city or things that affect our city. So there was only about eight or nine of us, so that was, that was pretty intimate for all of us. Chris already talked about the Planning Commission, we do have that upcoming. We do have the First Citizen Banquet. Also, I'm doing the Volunteer Coordinating Committee for Counselor Freeman this Thursday, and I have Kaiser Festival and Advisory Board Meeting on the 22nd, where we have New Year, New Goals, and it's-
Okay, rock and roll. One thing, and thank you for bringing up the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee meeting and the conversation about streetlights. Mr. Jaffe does work for the Council of Governments, so he's not aware of how we do the streetlighting districts here, so in case anybody had any questions, the Newburgh Drive residents have been offered the same thing every neighborhood in Kaiser has available to them if they want streetlights. The way it's done is you form a streetlighting district, it is installed, and then the cost for the streetlights, and then the ongoing electrical costs, go on your property tax. So that's how it's done in Kaiser. I know Salem has a little bit different process, and Newburgh Drive has, all the residences there have been approached with the opportunity to do exactly that. We just have to get affirmative answers back from a certain percentage, and I don't remember what that is, is it 50-plus-one? Or six, about two-thirds? Is that correct?
I believe it's two-thirds.
So if two-thirds of the residences to say yes, then that can happen. So that process is already well underway. We just have to hear back from the residents there. So thank you, I'm glad that is being kept front and center. Counsel Herera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see, on the 9th, I went to the Parks Advisory Board, and Matt did a wonderful job explaining about the smoking thing, and that was kind of an interesting topic. On the 11th, I attended the DACA Oregon fundraiser with a school board member, women's school board member, and my great nephew, Anthony Medina, and had the pleasure of having a great conversation with Superintendent Chuck Ransom. On the 14th, the start of the Martin Luther King Week, we, I was a guest with the I Am My Brother's Keeper, my good friend over at the Faith Christian Church. And the following, yesterday, which would have been yesterday, we had the great event over at the MLK March, and I want to thank Mayor Bennett and all the wonderful people there, Chuck Police Chief Moore, and Chuck Lee, it was kind of who's who, Christie Perry, all the wonderful people that spoke, and especially the students that talked, it was wonderful and very well organized, I must say. Also, and in the spirit of Martin Luther King thing, I really appreciate some of the stuff that was said there, especially in today's times, because I think those people that were there was very inspiring to hear, especially the young people, like I said, and it was very touching to me. What I have coming up is the First Citizen this Saturday, which should be a pretty fun event. Then we have our Sports Banquet coming up on 27th, and I think there's, what, three or four of us attending, I believe. Also, I want to say, I have some training coming up with Mono Mono Board, and the last thing I wanted to say was, Thursday, we will, I will finally be able to attend the Gupser Neighborhood Association Meeting, and I will report to you folks on that, but that's pretty much it, that I remember. Thank you very much.
All right. Busy times, sir. Counsel Anderson.
Thanks, Mayor Clark. I shall try and get through this quickly, because I have to depart momentarily. Past meetings, I went to the Kaiser Chamber Board as a liaison to that group from this body. Again, just continue to be impressed with the volunteers that are really helping to make not only that organization happen, but this community happen, as well as I think has been discussed and noted already. Just two items I would just point out, as they're preparing for Iris Festival and so forth, one of the things they're looking at postponing, I think this year, may be the marathon, just a lot of moving parts on that, and more focused on more of the other runs. So see, that was, there was some feedback about why that's a good idea, and from the sounds of it, it's a good idea. But one thing that folks should get on their calendar is, coming up on February 28, the Community Conversation, that'll be taking place here by the chamber, kind of, I think the topic, and I'm going to botch this totally, but it's River Road and kind of what folks think should happen along River Road, and that's important to have the community turn out for that, so we have a thorough discussion on that. I think one of the other things they're wanting to make sure is, on the radar, is just in terms of cautiously looking at how we are addressing and looking at our urban growth boundary issues. I know there are a lot of complicated issues. We've been, a lot of folks have been meeting with consultants around that, that Nate pulled together, so we understand that there's a report, an expected report coming at some point in time, so looking forward to that. I want to extend my appreciation for somebody, I'm not exactly sure who wound up covering for me, if that even happened, at the County Commissioner Breakfast here this past week. My apologies for not making it there, thank you, sir. Appreciate that so much. Had a conflict that I had to stick to. I had to miss the Stormwater Advisory Committee Council or meeting on December 14 due to a work meeting in Portland that precluded me from being there on time, or being there, period. Appreciate Matt Lawyer covering Claggett Creek Water, Count, Watershed Council for me. I wound up going home ill that day, and so they did not want me at that meeting, I assure you. And it's already been noted, First Citizens Banquet is this Saturday. I would note that Whittaker's K-Town Choir is going to be singing and providing entertainment at that. Also, let's see, I noted the February 28, the Community Conversation, and then finally, just because I'm involved with the legislature, that's really important for us all as Oregonians, but February 5 is the convening of the 2018 Legislative Session, so folks should be tracking that, because things are going to move very quickly, I can assure you of that. Thank you. Thank you.
Whiplash comes to mind. That's going to be a fast-moving session. If people want to keep track of what's going on at the legislature, they do have a system called OLS, the Oregon Legislative Information System. It's very easy to look up bills, topics and so forth. And that system has allowed all of us to see the testimony and materials that are submitted to the committees. And that's very helpful for us because as Oregonians, we want to stay very informed and up to date on what's going on. Thank you for bringing that up. I'm just going to add a couple of things. At the Kaiser Heritage Foundation Board, there was an announcement that Bob Parsons will be leaving the board and we want to thank him for his service on that board. Lyndon Zietz, who's been the president, will take his place as treasurer and Dennis Koho will be coming on as the president of the board and that transition's going to help happen over the next few weeks. So this is another volunteer organization that the city's involved with because while the Kaiser Heritage Foundation owns the building, that wonderful schoolhouse next door, the city owns the land, so we're in business together. Great things are going to be happening there, so watch the papers for that. On the 10th, I went to SEDCOR, which is the Strategic Economic Development Corporation, and there was a presentation with an analysis of tax reform and what it means for our business community, what it, all the different nuances that they are anticipating will come out for that and then how businesses can be prepared to plan accordingly. Commissioners Breakfast, we met with Commissioners Brentano and Cameron. A thank you to Counselor Herrera for coming to that as well. Sheriff Myers was there and County Manager John Latimer. Also, we were joined by the Mayor of Donald, Oregon, Rick Olmstead. He saw the public announcements, since these are public meetings, and had an opportunity to join us. He's relatively new mayor who I'd met at one of the mayor coalition meetings, so it was delightful to have him there and build relationships with our neighboring cities. So thank you to Mayor Olmstead for joining us. A lot of these have already been mentioned, so in addition to what everybody's been talking about, I will meet with SCATS, which is the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study on the 23rd. And then I will be meeting with the League of Oregon Cities Executive Director, Mike Colly on the 24th. He's already hit the ground running, representing cities and working for cities across the state and I'm very excited to have him on board. On the 25th, I will be attending the Marion Polk Medical Society Annual Meeting and Dinner. They've been an important partner as we've worked to bring more and more medical facilities and work with physicians in our community for a healthy and well-served community for medical services. On the 26th, I have AMPAC, which is the Oregon Municipal Planning Organization Consortium, which is a gathering of folks across the state who live within the MPOs and this is dealing with statewide and regional transportation. MPOs was the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization portion of that. And then on Saturday, the 27th, will be the first coffee with Kathy for this year. It'll be at 1:00 PM at Mommy and Maddie's. That's an open casual conversation. Come by, coffee's optional, good conversation is not. It's always a good time and I learn a lot from folks. And then we will have the, you mentioned the Council of Governments Annual Meeting and Wars Banquet on the 31st. And then MLACT, the Midvalley Area Commission on Transportation will meet on the 1st.
One more thing I'd like to add.
There's more.
There's, there's one more thing, actually.
Oh, my gosh.
For the last four days, we've had a crew of some great volunteers spearheaded by Mark Collier down at Kaiser Rapids Park and they have removed every single Filbert tree. And it looks absolutely, they raked the fields, they had the big equipment. Randy Miller, I think, was down there. Jerry Nutbrock was down there. Mark Shaq, I mean, Pop Shackelford was down there. It's amazing. Now they just have their burn piles they just need to burn, but it was at four days, that's it, and they were done. Three and a half. So I want to thank them very, very much for helping the city up with doing that. So if you guys get a chance, go down there, it's, looks awesome.
Wow. Speaking of which, just so the rumor mill doesn't get started, city manager, what's going to happen there?
Well, that's a bit up in the air at the moment, but the hope, well, we're going to put out an RFP and hopefully we'll get a farmer that wants to plant it in some sort of grass crop. So the idea-
Is that grass?
Well, we're not, we're not nearly that progressive, Counselor Herrera. Probably, probably wheat initially to stabilize the ground, then it'll be worked and then probably planted into fescue, which will be harvested for the seed. The nice thing about fescue is that when they're done harvesting for the seed or when that lease expires, ground lease expires, when we're ready to use it at some point, it will just be mowed and be grass because fescue is what we typically plant. So it'll work out perfectly. So that's the intent.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So a lot of big changes, but we want to make sure people knew that, what, what was going to be happening next with that. That's going to raise a lot of questions. All right. That takes us then to other business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members or staff an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy. Tim?
Nothing as well.
Nothing. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Madam Mayor and City Council, haven't seen all of you for a little while and I missed the January 2nd meeting, so just want to say thanks for your service tonight and wish you all a happy and healthy 2018.
And you survived the Hawaiian Missile.
Yeah, yeah. You didn't get irradiated-
And I did survive the Hawaiian Missile Alert, yes. That's a whole nother story.
Did not get irradiated and I don't see any tan lines. Nate?
I just wanted to let the council know that we have been having conversations with the architect on the theaters and while you have been busy working, they have been busy working. They anticipate actually submitting for a foundation permit. His goal is by the end of this week. So, so there's a lot that has been happening on that quietly, but, but moving forward steadily. And the other thing, I wanted to underscore the importance of this community conversation that Counselor Anderson mentioned. We really need some discussion about, this is tied into that 1% discussion. And as you may remember, we had, had a proposal that we require businesses as they construct or remodel that they would contribute. This, we need to hear from the community what the intent is. Are we happy with River Road the way it is? Is that, are we, are we good with what it is? Do we want to see some changes? What kind of changes, if so? And at what point, how is it that we're going to create a plan to implement what we want River Road to become? So underscore that. That's on the, on the date again, Counselor Anderson, it was February 28th. And it will be here at this building, so you'll hear us talking about it coming up more importantly. And from that, we plan to craft a plan and then come back to council, to the chamber to discuss it there and then come back here to council.
Fabulous. I love it.
City Attorney.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. That takes us to Written Communications. Oh, one more. Counselor Herrera.
I, I forgot this and I wanted to mention, I went to the event, the lunch event with the Chamber where McNary did a great presentation on Sea Tech, their version of it. And that was a great program. I wanted compliments to Daniel for putting that together, it was very well done. And also, I wanted to, didn't want to leave you out, I also got to, on the, on the Monday event, I had the honor of marching with Benny Williams and double ACP president and Alan Holland, who is Polk County, a good friend of mine and happens to be Tim Wood's father-in-law. Sorry about that.
Smart.
It is, it is very small and well-connected community. Thank you so much for sharing that. Written Communications, I don't have anything tonight. Agenda input, we will be, let's see, February 5th, we'll meet in regular session at 7:00 PM. February 12th, we have a work session. We don't have a topic at this point, but we will leave it on the calendar and take it off if necessary. And then, next meeting after that will be February 20th, 2018. That will be again a Tuesday because of the President's Day holiday. And that will be a meeting convening at 7:00 PM and Council President Parsons will be chairing that meeting as I will be out of the state. And that is all I have tonight. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Counselor Ryan.
Thank you. Just a side note that before we meet again as a collective group, Ware Mart should be open February 1st.
We're all going to be kind of like that old television commercial, open, oh, commercial, open, open, open.
That's what they're saying. When you go to the door, that's what they're saying, just to confirm, but.
Yes?
One more item. I for, totally forgot because I saw Counselor Herrera, I believe, has his ballot. So January 23rd is the deadline to turn in your ballot for the current election.
Good point.
So some of us don't mail our ballots in, so we will wait until the end to turn it in. So if you're like me, don't forget.
Or some of us just would rather drop it off than put a stamp on it. And we do, so everybody remembers, we do have a drop-off point in front of City Hall that's open 24/7. Just drop it in and make sure to get your ballots in and vote. Every vote counts. Thank you. Good word. All right. If there's nothing else, it is 8:43 and we are adjourned.